All right, welcome everyone. This is March 17th, Tuesday, our legislative session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, foundation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At first, we have a presentation this evening? The proclamation or the presentation? Proclamation? Presentation? No presentation. We have a proclamation this evening. Please, if you are affiliated with the April 2020 America and Military Saves Month, Robin Burchett, I hope I said your name correctly.
Yes.
Thank you. And Assistant Banking Center Manager of the Armed Forces Bank. And we will be presenting a proclamation this evening for you. Brenda Wolf is going to read the proclamation and then we will give it to you. Thank you.
Whereas personal and household savings is fundamental to America's stability and vitality. Adequate emergency savings, retirement funds, and safe debt income ratios are critical components of personal financial security. America's saves and military saves are national marketing campaigns to persuade, encourage, and motivate Americans to take financial action in building wealth through saving money and reducing debt. Now therefore, I, Usha Reddy, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as America and Military Saves Month, and encourage citizens to set a personal savings goal, debt reduction goal, and make a savings plan or take another positive wealth building action during America and Military Saves Month, and pledge to sustain that action during the year.
Thank you. Does she already have the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. Robin, would you like to say a few words this evening?
Just real quick. Military Saves actually started in 2007, and it is across the United States. It started out as just a week in March, and they've upgraded that to a full month in April. And it's a campaign that they are trying to educate all the military, this is what this is based as military, getting them to come up with a savings plan, reduce their debt. They want to be able to make sure that they are ready, and especially at a time like this with what's going on in the world now, it's really important that we have that savings plan intact. I've been doing it for a couple of years now, and it's an awesome program, and I'm proud to be a part of it. And I thank you very much for signing this for us.
Thank you, Robin. Typically, I'd come and hug you, but virtual hug.
No hugs. Just a high five in the air.
There we go, air five.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you for coming here this evening as well.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Commissioner comments.
All right. Couple things. One, reached out to James Kelly earlier today and just kind of got an update about what is going on since there seems to be a lot of recent movement with some federal stimulus-type activity. One thing he wanted to make sure that we conveyed to our public is that the GI Bill, soldiers that are using the GI Bill at K-State and area universities or colleges is protected. Those military students will continue to receive their checks, so they got that done and passed. Now, they're working on two other parts. One, the first part addressing small businesses, and I think that in that vein, he's encouraging, Senator Moran is wanting to know local business owners. Perhaps the Aggieville Business Association could weigh in of concerns as they formulate this next piece of legislation that's pretty much headed towards the Senate so they can make sure that his local concerns are addressed. And then the last part is with our airport. There's been stimulus and talk about helping with the airplanes, but he's wanting everyone to know that he's focused on the airport, not the airplanes, and that we need to make sure that we, he wanted us to know that he understands that this is about shoring up the airport funding and not just helping their airplane companies stay afloat. So those are the key points. There's a lot more. Really want to encourage those small businesses that are being affected and large businesses to reach out to James Kelly or any of the Senator Moran's staff because they are desperately looking for ways to help, and they just need our help to get that connection established. The other thing is just what I mentioned earlier. I think there's lots of concerns, right, as there should be, but what I want to convey from my position is that we're going to try to do all we can, at least I am, to ensure that people can keep, are not harmed more during this crisis by any inaction on our part or overreactions or by certain community services. And that goes down to housing potentially. I know that we've received some comment on that, maybe more later, but housing and the water services, those types of public goods, and again, it kind of ties back into the federal level where Senator Moran's been talking about this being locally led but federally supported. And so if we wait for federal action, clearly we'll not get it quickly, and it might not be what we need at the local level. So I think that's, I'm encouraged by what the mayor and what the commission and what even some of the county commission and the community leaders are doing because there is a need for a locally-led effort here.
Anybody else? Commissioner comments?
First of all, I just want to convey my concern about what the community and what our state and just our whole country is going through with regard to this coronavirus. And, you know, this is the worst, the thing you would never wish upon any country, any world, and we're in it for the next, sounds like, couple of months. Just hang in there, and all we can do is the best we can do. I know that there are going to be people who get really anxious. There are going to be people who have difficulty making it through this. So if you can find a way to help those folks that you're acquainted with, it's really important that we try to do that. I want to mention, I am the representative of the Manhattan City Commission to the Flint Hills Regional Council. That group consists of a seven-county area, and every city and county in that area has a representative that comes together to apply for grants and do things, interact in ways that bring us together as a region, which makes sense, but by our name. But it's important that we know the county commissioners in Gary County and in Potawatomi County and Clay County, and so this is one way for us to do it, but we also accomplish things. So we have a grant to locate a contamination on land sites in the seven counties. We have facilitated the Joint Land Use Plan Study, which is the noise, one of the components of it was the noise study surrounding Fort Riley. So what I want to say is that we have an executive director position that is open. And Gary Stith retired in December. Jana Williams has been serving in an interim role. We have advertised the position on the National Association of Planners website and with a May 1st application deadline. We have 20 applications so far, and so I want to be sure that the word spreads among the planning community. It doesn't, the person does not have to be a planner, but it would sure help, is all. So this pay range is about $60,000 to $70,000. So I wanted to just mention that. You're welcome to get in touch with me. We've formed a search committee. And the next item is the Manhattan Housing Authority. There are 20 studio apartments at the top of our high-rise here. Since it's been renovated, they've had difficulty leasing those studio apartments. So they are based on your income. So if you're a low-income, maybe you just get Social Security. They take one-third, the federal government's policy is that they take one-third of your income for the housing costs, and you don't pay utilities, it's just what, you know, you have to go see them and figure out how much that is. So just wanted to plug the need to, we have a lot, see a lot of "for rent" signs right now. Our community is emptying out with K-State down, but it also is a solution for some of the people who may lose their jobs or who don't have a job or who are destitute. And, you know, we're hearing about more people living in cars and living in less sheltered areas than are desirable, so I would just make that, let the public know about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to speak just a little bit about this coronavirus. You know, the way I see it, there's three impacts to this. You know, one is, you know, health and safety. The second is, we've got a lot of hysteria and panic out there. The third is economic. And I think the various government agencies have done a pretty good job on health and safety. They put everything in place. Hopefully, some folks will calm down, quit buying out the toilet paper, just ridiculous on that hysteria side. But I think the one thing that hasn't been properly addressed is the economic impact, especially at the local level. You know, what can we do as a local government to address the economic impact? Because clearly, you know, sales tax revenues are probably going to go down, at least in some commodity areas, maybe not the retail liquor stores from what I've seen. People seem to be stocking up on that as they're staying home. But a lot of the others are going to go down, and of course, we know the bars and restaurants are going to be negatively impacted. So what that tells me is that at the local level, we need to take a real hard look at our budgets, and we need to consider helping all the businesses that are doing things like closing their bars and make absolutely certain we do not raise the property tax. In fact, we ought to take a hard look at rolling it back this year. That's one way we can help economically. Now, that also means that some of the government employees may be facing things like no cola and a wage freeze, and you're going to say, hey, that's terrible to suggest that. But think about what's happening in the restaurants if you're on the waitstaff. Even if they pay you, say, go home, you don't have to come into work. I think the waiter makes about $2 an hour at one of the places I frequent. The rest is, you know, is tips, and they're not going to get the tips. But the government employees don't have to worry about getting laid off because they're paid for by government funds, so whether they work or not, you're going to get paid. But maybe the pain has got to be spread to the local government at that level, and I know people don't want to hear that. That includes the police department, the fire, everybody that works in City Hall, because everybody else out there is feeling the pain. And some of the requirements we're putting on, like if we close down all the restaurants, like a lot of cities have done, that's just going to make the economic impact of this worse. And so I want to spend some time thinking about what we can do to mitigate that, because everyone seems to be focused on the health end, and I applaud the efforts there. But we got to get a handle on this economic impact because it'll have long-term detrimental effects. I noticed the municipal bond market sort of took a hit today. People don't want to buy municipal bonds, and isn't that what drives all our projects? Maybe nobody's going to bid on them. So we may have to delay some projects that a lot of people think are important, like the North Campus Corridor phases. They may have to just be put on hold for maybe a period as long as a year to help get this budget thing under control. So I just throw that out for consideration.
Well, there's a lot of discussion about the coronavirus, so I'm just going to take a few minutes also, because this may be the last time we see each other personally like this for the next couple of months, at the very least. This morning, I was on K-Man, and at that time, the number was 4,700 something, 4,748, I think, as far as cases. We are up to 6,700 right now. That's more than 2,000 in a period of less than seven hours or eight hours. So this is growing fast. And back in February, a week ago, it was 663 on March 9th. March 17th, it's 6,439 the last time I checked, and the deaths are over 100. That's what we know of. That's what's been documented. The rest of it has not been documented. February 17th, a month ago, was 12 cases, and like I said, today we have 2,439. So this is growing. We are not even close to the peak yet, and it's going to keep on growing. And I think there are lots of implications to this, but at the same time, there are a lot of measures we have to take. We typically say, go bi-local, do everything, and this time, we're telling you to stay home, don't go anywhere. And as much as I hate to hear myself say that, social distancing is the only measure we have. We don't have medications, we don't have vaccinations, we don't have treatments. And to protect our individuals that have a weak immune system or our elderly, this is the measure we have to take. If you have elderly in nursing homes, they're already taking some of those precautions, but a lot of people live with their grandparents or live with somebody else that's a little bit older, may have some kind of, like I said, a weak immune system. That's what we need to be careful about. I've tried to do everything in my power so that we don't have as many touch points. This isn't about you going to the grocery store and buying something. It's the doorknobs that we touch, it's the chairs that we touch, it's the shopping cart that we touch. I've touched my face a million times already just sitting here, and I haven't washed my hand all the time, so I worry about things like that. And I worry on a greater spectrum because the schools have now closed for the duration of the academic year. President Myers has done an amazing job of making sure that the students do not come back, and so that's alleviated some of that problem, so we don't have thousands of students coming back from spring break. And they've also put in measures where they can only get certain things out of their dorms. In the City of Manhattan, we have taken measures, and I want to compliment our businesses. They've taken it upon themselves to close, lack of people coming in, I'm sure. This is going to have an economic impact at all levels, and not just for the City of Manhattan, not just for the State of Kansas, not just for the United States, but globally. So it's going to impact everybody's lives in one way or another. Hourly pay, if you're not getting paid, you might not have insurance, you might not be able to pay your rent, you might be evicted. Food, USD 383 and other agencies have stepped up to give meals so that you can just go pick it up and take it home. But I don't know how long this is going to last, and that's what scares me the most. One or two weeks, we can sustain it. When I heard the president the other day, and he said July and August, that scares me. So I think that's what we need to think about is long-term, how to take care of each other physically, emotionally, mentally, and financially. And we will make those hard decisions, but we are not the only community that has to make those decisions. Right now, we're in survival mode. That's it. We're in basic survival mode. I have two children that are physicians, one in Los Angeles and one in Indianapolis. They already are facing the shutdowns, lockdowns. I have, my brother works in Indianapolis, they've had their first death, and he said the saddest thing about the death was that the man who passed away because of the coronavirus, his wife had also been, was tested positive, and they couldn't be together because she wasn't sure, and they could only do it via FaceTime. These are just small pieces of puzzle that are coming together, and we're not at the peak point where we need to be. I want everybody to be on high alert. Do not touch each other. People are going to come back from Colorado, from Washington, from New York, all kinds of places. Spring break is ending. I don't know where everybody's been, and that's why we need to be cautious. So I can't emphasize that enough. We are going to work on some measures together as far as what we can do at the city level to make sure everybody is healthy, as much as we can be. And all of these processes are so that our hospitals don't get inundated with people coming in to get tested and waiting in the emergency room. We don't have enough nurses. We never had enough nurses, enough physicians to begin with, and this is going to make it even worse. We don't, we have communities that don't have hospitals, that are going to seek the, be at the mercy of Via Christi. We don't have enough tests. We don't have those tents that they talk about. We don't have those drive-through test kits that they're talking about. So we're all on wait mode as well. So nobody's invincible, and everybody needs to take care of each other by staying away from each other. And that sounds terrible, but that's just the fact of the day. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows the sense of urgency. I'm sure by tomorrow evening, we're going to be at 10,000. I have no doubt. And we are escalating pretty fast. And as doom, as doomy and negative as that sounds, we are working together. We are going to work with all of our agencies. And feel free to call us, text us, email us, whatever it is. We are at your disposal. We work for you. So that's my piece with this. We can move on with the general agenda. Who's going? Did you want to add anything, Ron?
Can I just maybe mention about the Thursday meeting and that there's questions about capacity, there's questions about what the Health Department's doing, but there's a venue for those questions later on Thursday.
I want someone to speak just tentatively about the possibility of moving to a more electronic delivery format for the City Commission.
Sure.
We talked just before this meeting, and I think we need to give the public a heads-up.
Sure. So as Commissioner Morris indicated, we did spend most of our briefing time prior to this meeting talking about how the commission may meet going into the future, which will be more of a web-based meeting that utilizing Facebook Live or Zoom. We would continue to broadcast like we do now. They would participate from home either via their own video or even could be over a telephone. And we will work to continue to try and facilitate public participation in that event. It can range from comments, trying to get information out on the agenda in more detail than we have, other than just the written form that we have, and provide for the public to be able to make comments about anything on the agenda so the commission has that information, but also looking at opportunities for possibly if public to be able to potentially attend a location. That's one of the things that we're still working on for their verbal comments possibly during the meeting. So we're looking and exploring a number of different options, and hopefully, we can pull that first one off for City, County, County this Thursday.
Julie Gibbs will be speaking at that time.
Correct. The Riley County Health Officer, Julie Gibbs, is currently scheduled to provide a presentation and answer questions.
Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments for the items on the consent agenda?
I would like to move Item H, Joint Maintenance Facility, from the consent agenda to the general agenda. I just have, I think the commission needs to talk about how we're going forward with some of these larger projects.
Other comments? Any public comments on the general consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda except for Item H, which has been moved to the general agenda.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mayor, ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. On the general agenda, we're going to consider the first reading of an ordinance rezoning 1018 and 1026 Points Avenue to allow a new restaurant, café, and drinking establishment in the existing buildings on the site. And the presenter is Chad Bunter, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you for having me. Bear with me as I open this up real quick. Sorry about that. Good evening. Provide a quick, well, not quick, but a summary of the rezoning request for PUD. Planning Board heard this item on March 2nd, and provide with you, to you, our staff, a summary of our staff memo and then their recommendation. The applicant is a BBN Architects here in town, and the owner is Phyllis Pease. We're dealing with two properties here that ultimately will become one. Just right across the street here, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. Our two, the two separate properties that are there today is this office building at 1018 Points Avenue and then this automobile service station at 1026 Points. The applicant, Phyllis Pease, and their business, Little Batch Bakery, will end up renovating both of these buildings. The office building, as it sits today, will become a bakery and kitchen space for their existing business today. That'll be Phase 1, that'll occur this year, and then Phase 2 will be renovating the service station to establish a restaurant, bakery, and then a drinking establishment at this location here. This is the site plan that is part of the preliminary development plan for the PUD rezoning. As you know, today, there are a number of open curb cuts along Points and 11th Street. And as you can see by the proposed site plan, they will close or narrow a number of these as well as renovate the site. Today, it's mostly asphalt for the service station and former gas station they're planning. With this renovation, as they put it, a unique social environment combining the indoor and outdoor spaces, as you see here, with dining and then gathering spaces to provide that restaurant, coffee house, bakery, and drinking establishment. The bakery spot here in 1018 will have a few staff members for the bakery, basically be open from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., is what they've put in their application documents. And then the restaurant, which they've named Parkside Station, will have seven to 10 staff members throughout the day and be open probably, most likely, from 7:00 a.m. to in the evening around 10:00 p.m. This has, they have applied for a national registration for historic place, and it's our understanding that process is moving along and is most likely going to be a place registered on the state national registry of historical places, which will help with tax credits for the commercial businesses. The staff memo outlines all the findings for the rezoning and the preliminary development plan. Unless you have specific questions, I won't go through each one of those, but as you see here, Points Avenue and 11th Street is a commercial corridor. Primarily, it is a business district. Most of the corridor is Zone C1, Restricted Business District. What they have proposed is to implement more of a service commercial or retail space there. And this is what the zoning map shows, as I mentioned, and then the future land use does show it as commercial, but more of a business commercial. However, in our evaluation, when you take into account what's around in terms of the residential, the park, and the other businesses, a small repurposed commercial use as this probably fits pretty well along the corridor. It won't be overpowering to the neighborhood or be intrusive, and should, as we envision with the future land use map and the existing properties and the zoning, fit pretty well. Okay, so again, I, let's see, here we go. The buildings will most likely, well, will largely remain the same, some upgrades and new signage, but there won't be any significant changes with the existing building.
So if they're asking for historic designation, they're going to leave the fueling or gas station in that basic shape?
Correct.
As like an old-timey? As like an old-timey diner or something?
Yep.
Has been left in?
And that is a fairly popular
Yeah, I think so, too.
Use for these old buildings
Yeah.
Across the country and the state. And so, this innovative reuse of that building, it fits well with the tax credits.
Sure.
It's applicable with a little bit of paint and some new doors and windows and whatnot. It will revitalize it, but it'll still be the same building.
And the alley will stay the same at 16 feet and be two-way? Or is it going to be one-way?
We really didn't discuss that in that great detail. They have not proposed any reorganizing of that travelway. I suppose if it becomes an issue, staff can consider it. I don't foresee it being a significant issue.
Okay.
There is parking there. There's always, has been parking there.
Yeah. And it's been a concentrated kind of site without a lot of, I mean, there've been a lot of parked cars there over the years.
Sure.
So, I suppose it's not going to be, it'll be better.
Parking-wise, I think it's anticipated that this will be less auto-oriented and be more walkable with the park and the neighborhood. We're in a highly walkable, bikeable area now of the city, so this will be nicer.
I wanted to ask with, so, I know that from 1970 on, it's been a filling station. And I don't know what year it was established. So, that's at least 50 years, I think.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering about any contamination on the site. Most gas stations and dry cleaners have contamination on the site.
Right.
And I'd be surprised if this one didn't, too.
We did look into that. KDHE, who manages those programs with former fueling stations and whatnot, let us know that those tanks were removed appropriately, that they have the appropriate permits or have dealt with those appropriately, and that there are monitoring wells by KDHE.
Okay.
To our knowledge, and we didn't really care to inject ourselves because we don't have a great deal of expertise in it, and we rely upon the state for their expertise, is it's handled appropriately. And there are appropriate measures if something were to occur that would come up through construction that would surprise all of us.
Okay.
The state is handling.
Thank you.
So, to finish up, as I mentioned, the Planning Board heard this on March 2nd, recommended approval to all for the rezoning and approved the preliminary development plan, as I showed you here, and carry that recommendation to you. And we also, staff also recommends approval. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Thanks, Chad. Are there questions for Chad or comments?
Well, comment, looks like a great development and looks like it fits perfect, a good thing to have next to City Park. I like it.
Is there a public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. I will say, I think this is, like you said, a prime location for individuals that are, you know, playing in the park or living around that area. But Morning Star used to be in one of those areas, one of those buildings over there, and it's moved to the north end near Old Navy. Is that right, Aaron? Yeah. They were going to have a ribbon-cutting, I believe, on March 20th, and I think it's been canceled. But that was a prime location. It was easily accessible, so hopefully we will make arrangements for others who need to go to the other one. But yeah, I think this is one of those locally-owned restaurants and cafes that we are looking forward to and wish it a lot of success. A lot of process. We don't know when all of it's going to come to fruition, but I don't see any, I support the project.
I'm pleased to see that both buildings are, because they have been aging for all these years without much improvement. So, this will be a nice cleanup and just, it'll be a nice place to visit. I'm sure it'll, I'm sure it'll be nice.
I remember when people would say, where is Morning Star? Some of the folks there would say, we're located right by the gas stations. That's not really a gas station. I'm glad we're doing something with it now. Other comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning 1018 and 1026 Points Avenue, a 22,500 square foot site generally located to the northeast of North 11th Street and Points Avenue intersection, to the Parkside Planned Unit Development based on the findings in the staff report, with two conditions of approval and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask? I'm right here. Hi. I just wanted, there was, I don't know if it's a point of order or it's confusion, not just on my part, but people, that we had asked for public comments to be submitted online today, and I think were, those people were expecting them to be read at some point or heard at some point. And so, I don't know if you wanted to convey, or the City Manager conveyed, that this is usually done at the first scheduled meeting, and since this was not that, but clarifying that before we
Sure.
Force them to watch the rest of the meeting in hopes that they're
That was my mistake. I thought we don't have public comments.
So, the intent of our message to put out there tonight, just because of the circumstances we're in, was if they didn't want to come to the meeting tonight, folks could submit comments based on things that were on the agenda. But we didn't really get any of those comments. We got a lot of other comments. And we've provided you copies of those comments and emails, and we'll be forwarding all those emails. And most of them had to do with actions that the community members that submitted the comments would like to see occur to protect some of the things you spoke about in the briefing session, actually, with regard to housing and the negative circumstances that folks are going to find themselves in, rent abatements and not provisions that might keep folks from having their leases terminated and being evicted and all those kind of things. And so, the Commission's policy is you only have general public comments the first meeting of the month, so the next one for that would be April 7th, which would likely be online. And so, we try to facilitate having a provision for public comments. So, that was why those comments weren't ripe for debate necessarily this evening. But I wanted to, I'm glad you brought that up because we did provide all the emails that were submitted to the Clerk, to the Commissioners in their packet tonight.
Thank you. I just, I, and also for me, I needed to understand it as a new Commissioner. I'm still, I don't know how long I get to claim that learning curve, but I also wanted to clarify for my own self and that we did receive all of the public comments, so we will be reviewing those.
Right. Well, I'm glad, I'm going to have you hold for just a second.
That's okay.
I do want to say, I also misled the public. I forgot what day of the week I meant because all of the days seem the same to me anymore. But yeah, so, I think the, they wanted us to address, as was mentioned, all the loss as far as the jobs and the rent and the evictions. We are going to look at some of those processes and work with other entities because, like I said, this isn't just a local problem. It's a state and national problem, and there are resources that people are trying to put together so to alleviate some of that pain and hardship, especially with having children at home and you still have to pay your utility bills and all the other bills that you have coming your way. So, yeah, I think we'll probably have more information as we come along, but please keep in touch with us. I totally forgot to mention that at the beginning. Thank you, Aaron, for bringing that back up. Now, we are going on to the second general agenda item. Consider authorizing Public Works Administration to request construction bids for Kirkwood Drive Extension SM 1816, ST 1811. And the presenter is Rob Aden, Brian Johnson, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. The item before you tonight is called the Kirkwood Drive Extension. While the project is called Kirkwood Drive, the project is actually, has a goal to alleviate an accident pattern at Tuttle Creek Boulevard and Walters Drive. Most of you know that intersection has a significant accident history with future traffic increases from both the middle school expansion and with the gymnasium and potential commercial development, that accident pattern will only get worse, and that's what this project is here to alleviate. So, for our agenda tonight, we're going to review the traffic pattern at Walters Drive and US 24 TCB. We're going to review the expansion of the Eisenhower School and the new gym. Then we're going to look at the Kirkwood Drive Extension Project. Going to talk a little bit about Walters Morgan's property and the commercial expansion potential there. And then the last part of it is a financing plan, budget, and timeframe. So, let's look at the overall site. This would be Eisenhower School. This would be the Walters Morgan property. Walters Drive is here. Tuttle Creek Boulevard is here. Marlat runs east and west here. There's an existing structure, stormwater structure underneath Tuttle Creek Boulevard, and that's a 50-year storm structure, and that's an important note because that really regulates the downstream water. With part of our permitting process, we had to evaluate this stream as though that structure wasn't there. This structure actually acts as a detention pond, an in-lu detention structure. And so, all of those floodplain questions that come about downstream with permitting, we analyze that based on that structure not being there with a full 100-year flow. This intersection here is relatively new, built about 10 years ago. It's signalized. There's left turn, protected left turns, both north, south, and east-west. This is where we want to get folks to because this is a signalized intersection, much safer than Walters and TCB. This is the Walters-TCB intersection. That existing intersection is not signalized. It's about six lanes to get across it, plus the shoulders on both sides. So, it's about 80 feet of concrete you have to get across that intersection. As I'll show you later, that speed limit there is 55 miles an hour. The 85th percentile is about 60. 60 miles an hour is about 110 feet a second. So, every second it takes you to get across that intersection, that vehicle coming at you is doing 110 feet. So, traffic data, ADT on Walters Drive, so that street that runs in front of the intersection or in front of the school, 231 vehicles in the peak hour. What's important to notice about this is that the peak hour is 7:00 a.m. ADT on Walter, or on TCB is about 14,011 hundred of those are in the peak hour. And what that tells you is that there's so many vehicles on TCB, there's not a lot of gaps. 1100 vehicles an hour is about a vehicle every five or six seconds. So, you've only got about six seconds to make a decision and go. Again, that peak time lines up with this peak time, and any time you see that as a traffic engineer, your red light should go off. Posted speed limit on TCB is 55 miles an hour, again, about 110 feet a second. Because it's such a high speed, those injuries or those accidents are injury accidents. And I've got a diagram here in a second to show you. With the middle school expansion, we're expecting about 100 vehicles per hour, so that 231 will probably go closer to 331 or 350. And then weekend tournaments on those let-out times and those come-in times, for all of you that have been to weekend tournaments, you know there's a big rush for 20 minutes. 10 minutes when the last game gets over, 10 minutes when the first game starts. Big rushes and then not a whole lot of people while the games go on and then another big rush. So, here's our accident pattern at this intersection. Yellow is property damage. You can see them all. They actually overlay each other. Red is injury accidents. Total in five years is 25 accidents at that intersection, so about an accident every other month. These red injury accidents, the one I want to really focus on is this one right here. This is actually a semi that was headed northbound, missed a bus at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. School bus loaded with kids. Guy swerved to miss the bus, ended up in the ditch, rolled the truck over. He got hurt and got sent to the hospital. Imagine if he didn't swerve, doing 110 feet a second. Imagine what that accident pattern would look like. So, here we are again with an overall, and what we want to focus on here is this intersection. If we don't do Kirkwood Drive, this intersection's going to get past capacity. It's going to be full. What do people do when they get in long lines? They cut through. They find other ways to go. Unfortunately, the cut-throughs are through residential neighborhoods here, here, and unfortunately, they lead to an intersection that has even less site distance. This intersection has less site distance than Walters. So, you think you're going to cut through and you're going to get to a better location, you're not. You're going to get to a worse location. So, what's the Kirkwood Plan look like? It extends Kirkwood Drive from where it stops currently at Walters Drive up to Marlat, comes off of this intersection, comes up, connects with Marlat. The goal is to get you to Marlat and TCB where we have a signal with a dedicated left turn that you can get into. It eliminates this bus maneuver here, so buses have to go north. Everybody coming through here goes north. We want to get everybody north as much as we can because we want to get you to that signalized intersection. Again, connection to the parking lot for the gymnasium, as well as likely be a connection here for these two properties so I can eliminate driveways along Walters Drive. We also have several driveways along Walters Drive that connect. We want to try to get rid of those, try to get those over onto Kirkwood. North side of the road. Correct. So, the Walters Morgan property, and I know there's some information in your memo about this, currently it's inside, it's in the county. This is not in the city limits, not connected to the city utilities. It's an eight-acre total site, and to give you an idea of what eight acres of commercial looks like, that's about the size of Campbellwood. So, if you can imagine the businesses in Campbellwood, those businesses could be here generating revenue. Because it's in the county, it doesn't generate sales tax for the city. It also doesn't generate property tax for the city. It also doesn't generate utility money for the city. So, all three of those things, if they annex and zone and plat, could be coming into our coffers. The comp plan has it listed as a C3 commercial, again, an eight-acre site currently in Riley County. In your backup, I think you saw a letter from Walters Morgan. This just kind of breaks that letter down to just a couple of bullet points. Currently, they're building a new facility out at the Tech Park. They have a facility they're building out there, new office space, new warehouse space, very nice facility. Once that facility is complete, their intent is to annex that existing eight acres, get it into the city, start developing revenue. Zone that property to C3 commercial, plat their existing property with easements rights away. And with the commercial zoning, their intent is to develop a transportation development district. That's very similar to Walmart, McDonald's, Scenic Crossland, Louisville, all of those locations where sales take place and we generate additional revenue, north downtown redevelopment, all of those locations. That's an extra generator of revenue for us. Now, the one thing that is not a generator of revenue, but is a great addition to the Northview area, we see survey after survey that talks about the Northview area and how they don't have commercial opportunities to go buy groceries, to go buy gas, to go shop and go do things. This is potentially that eight acres that they're looking for. It's on the east side of TCB. It's next to residential, lots of houses, lots of homes without commercial amenities. This could be that area. This could be that eight acres, that Candlewood that's in Northview. Financing, budget, and timeline. Project estimate is $1.2 million. That's our best guess now. We're at about 70% design. Stormwater funding has been included, $1 million for bridge inlet storms who are in design. That's already built into our spreadsheets. That's already built into out years. Current stormwater estimate, 694,000, so we're well underestimated. There's a trail on the east side of Kirkwood Drive to connect Marlat to Walters Drive. That trail is estimated $71,000. That's been programmed in trail funds for sales tax. That leaves us a balance of about $485,000. City Administration and Public Works is recommending $250,000 from surface transportation funding to help bring that 485 down to 235. So, that gap at 235 that's left, without any additional revenue, is about .01 mils on a 10-year bond. So, it's, realistically, it's about zero. It's a hundredth of a mil. But we have three options to help cover that hundredth of a mil. One, when they annex and zone, generate about $20,000 a year in property tax. Two, new sales tax from that will generate roughly $5,000 to $10,000 a year. Three, a new TDD tax will generate about another $5,000 to $10,000 a year. In total, somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 a year, which is more than .01 mils. So, with development, we could possibly actually have a positive revenue generator. Yes?
So, when they set up the TDD, does that have to, does some project of that money So when they set up the TDD, does that have to, does some project of that money goes to, have to be identified?
Yes.
Okay. What is that project?
We could set it up to either do the intersection or be part of Kirkwood or part of both.
Okay.
Or part of neither. There'll be an application at some point in the future and they'll come forward and there'll be a description of what that project is, just like a petition in a benefit district.
Who decides that?
They submit it to us and then you all review it. And you can change it, you can add to it, subtract to it, but they actually submit it to us, just like a petition, and then you get to weigh in on that petition.
We'll in effect describe any and all public projects around that site because we've even ran into situations, Commissioner, where TDDs are paying for things in the future that we didn't necessarily anticipate. Revenues may pick up, generate more than anticipated. We'll write this pretty liberal and be able to apply it really to any public infrastructure in and around that site.
The development itself, though, doesn't have to be identified. So in this case, just much like Blueville, it's on, and scenic crossing, it's on blank land. Now ideally with a TDD, you're only going to have additional sales tax. So you'd want something ideally that would produce sales tax.
Again, back to that C3 zoning. If it generates or if it develops the way that it's shown in the comp plan, that C3, sales happen, sales takes place, generates revenue. So all of these funding sources, what we've shown here is contingent on a four-acre development. This is an eight-acre development. We could theoretically generate twice as much. What we don't know is what's going to be in there. Is it going to be retail sales? Is it going to be a gas station? Who knows what it's going to be and what it's going to sell? But if it's retail sales, it will generate revenue that'll help pay for things. So approximately a nine-month build time. Gymnasium wants to be open middle of April of next year, so when you start backing up nine months, that gets us to a point where we need to make a decision. We have roughly two to three months of design, bid, and award. That gets us to maybe June. You add the nine months on to that, that gets us to April. That's why we're here before you tonight because the window is quickly closing and we need to decide if we're going to go out and bid this project with the financing that we've shown or if we're going to have everybody go back through the Walters and TCB intersection. For that, I'll stand for questions.
Thanks, Brian. Questions for Brian?
If we go back to the Kirkwood plan picture?
Yes.
So explain to me what all those, I see the parking lot and the building to the northeast of that parking lot is the?
Gym.
And, okay, and that's supposed to be attached to the school by that funny arrow, that deal?
This right here.
That's what the school, the school district was already going to be adding on for the sixth graders and whatever else?
That's where the new school is going to go, correct?
Right, okay. And so then that's how our building will attach to their building?
That's correct.
Out there. Okay, and so then that cul-de-sac around the backside, is that just a drop-off cul-de-sac?
That's a fire lane and a drop-off. Yeah, some trash enclosures back here, fire lane to get back here to fight fires. It's not a street. It's a 12-foot wide glorified alley to get equipment, materials back there if they need to fight a fire.
Okay. And then, so are we going to be having eminent domain or are they going to sell us that corner down there? What's the plan for that?
Down here?
Yeah, Walters, a piece of land there.
Sure. So part of?
Next step.
What the next steps are, we're going to get an appraisal for that property because that's their rights to have that appraisal. We're going to find out what the value of that is and then we're going to present that to Walters Morgan as their right as property owners. And then they're going to do some analysis to see if they want to donate, if they want to get paid for their compensation. We don't know what that value is yet. Is it 5,000 or is it 50,000? We don't know. There's existing easements over some of that property. There's existing stuff on some of that property. We don't know what that is. But if you authorize us to move forward, we're going to get an appraisal and we're going to find out what that number is.
And the rest of that ground is owned by the school district currently?
That's correct. Yes.
And we don't have to provide any compensation in particular for that?
They've indicated that they will donate the easements.
Okay.
I wanted to ask, that road to the west in the midway on Kirkwood that you say is intended?
This one?
No, to the west, go up Kirkwood there and now go west or to the left?
This one?
Into that. There's never going to be a light there, right?
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay, good.
This is going to be a driveway.
I want that traffic to flow out of the school.
Absolutely. No, there won't be a light there.
Because there's congestion at the school with pickups and I hope that this is part of the solution that gets people away from the school in an efficient way.
It will. It'll split that flow.
But there will be a stop sign out of the school property onto Kirkwood.
Right here, yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
And, but when the traffic on Walters, if you were to go west to Tuttle Creek Boulevard, you would, it's going to be a no-left turn over there?
So we have a couple of different choices there. We can no-left turn it and paint it. We've got a grant application into KDOT to do a three-quarter in intersection that KDOT's reviewing right now.
What is that? A three-quarter in?
It would be a left in and a right in and a right out. You wouldn't be able to make a left out.
Is it just going to be this little curb that high that's going to keep people from making a left like you do on McCall Road? That doesn't work.
It'd be more like what's on Bluemont at Third Street.
Okay.
You know how you can turn left and go into Sonic? Or you can turn right and go into Sonic or right out, but there's a full six-inch curb about six foot wide?
I just want, I want your plan to work.
Well, I do too.
I want people to respect it and, okay, that's reasonable. Okay. It's something, oh, the Transportation Development District. I think I would be interested in making sure that we are, that we find a way to do that. And so are you, would you be intending that to help pay for the bridge we're going to be putting in? Is that too far-fetched?
For the street?
The street?
The whole project.
Okay. Including the bridge. We just don't do bridges on it.
Depending on how?
On any given day here.
Depending on how the project develops. It could generate a little revenue. It could generate a lot of revenue. So and it could, we will identify all of the adjacent public projects that revenue could go towards.
Does Evergy plan to keep their substation there? Do you know?
Yes.
They do?
We have talked to them about that. That is actually a backup feed to Blue Township.
Yeah, right.
And so for the foreseeable future, that's going to be there. When we make this connection here, we'll probably eliminate some of this access here so I don't get vehicles turning in and out of there. We're going to relook at that also.
The little strip that goes in, a little pointed nose?
This?
No, clear the other side, opposite, yeah, up, that part, yeah, like Oklahoma.
The panhandle?
The panhandle, that's right, panhandle.
It kind of looks like Oklahoma, actually.
So there's not going to be highway access just because they have frontage, right? Okay, good.
First of all, that access is controlled by KDOT.
Yeah, I know.
So first you'd have to go ask them as staff.
And they won't.
And we would never support it either.
KDOT won't give access for that. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to be reassured that we won't complicate. We're trying to fix this and that would be?
That's the goal.
That would be a complication. Okay, thank you.
One more question?
Yes.
So as people are leaving the school along, in that new road?
Yes.
They cannot turn left and go back down to Walters. Everybody has to go to the north, is that what you're saying? Or that's an option to go north?
Well, they can go north if they want to go southbound on TCB. If you want to go north on TCB, you could come out here and turn north.
Okay, so if you want to, if you're going to come back into town, you cannot get there from coming out on Walters?
And we have a couple of options. We can put an island there. We can stripe it. We can sign it. We can stripe it and sign it because that's cheap and see how it works. And if we get a lot of people still turning left, we can go to the next set, which is put an island there. Then we can go to another set and we can put a full median in there.
So will there be some attempt to change the timing of the stoplights there at Marlat and TCB at different times of the day to accommodate that accumulating traffic? Is there anybody, somebody's thought about that probably, haven't they?
Sure. And so that intersection's video-controlled, so it's detected. It sees vehicles coming and then turns them green or red. It's a smart system.
Okay. That's already in place then?
Yeah, I mean, it's already in place. It already has a certain amount of green time for east-west, a certain amount of green time for north-south, and it's got video detection. It's one of our better signals because it's only 10 years old.
Other questions?
Can I close public comment? No, I think this is, you know, I do have one question, Brian, and that's about contamination. This has been a construction company site for a long time. And typically, they have dumped oil, done something on a site like this. And I just want to be sure that we are controlling in some way for the event, that possibility.
Well, I can't speak to what they've done on private property?
Sure.
For the last, you know, 20, 30 years. To my knowledge, they don't have underground storage tanks.
Okay.
So that discussion?
I don't know. I mean, you are the?
Well, it's in the county, so I don't have any regulations on it. They don't have underground storage tanks, to my knowledge. They fuel everything off-site. You know, we could do a Phase 1 environmental. We could certainly look at that or ask them if they have, but whoever buys that property would certainly do that. They're going to do a Phase 1 environmental.
Okay. So whoever buys it will?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's the check in the system. Okay, process. I think that's it. I did public comment already.
Yeah, I think this is, I don't know about how the timeline's going to work with everything else we have going on.
It's going to be close.
What does construction crews look like? Do they, are they still, everybody still doing what, any kind of road construction? I don't know how?
Yeah.
The coronavirus is impacting any of the work your guys are doing?
No, I actually talked with all my contractors Monday morning, called them to find out what their schedules are. They're all full bore as fast as they can go. Several of them reminded me that our contracts, our construction contracts, we pay by the cubic yard, not by the hour. So if they're not out there working, they're not out there getting paid. And them, like everybody else, they have bills to pay every month.
Right. Do any of these restrictions as far as the social distancing, is there a different type of outfits or anything else that they need to be wearing? Are they also?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, there's no OSHA requirements out there right now for six-foot distancing. You know, it's through the health department. We have contacted all of our contractors and we've told them our expectation is six feet from our employees at all times. So they've been made aware of that. They've told us that several of their insurance companies have asked them about a standard operating procedure of some sort that says that same thing. So I know it's going through that industry also as far as, you know, taking care of each other and watching out for, you know, contamination or cross-contamination with folks.
Right. Well, I know this would be a great time, not only with this project, but any project if we have street work going on, to get on it since everybody's in their homes. But at the same time, I would think those rules would also apply to them, like you said, with insurance and everything. If those are some of the things the insurance companies are looking at.
They had, a couple of them had mentioned that their insurers were asking them for a standard operating procedure plan, just like, just like we've been developing plans this week for how we're going to operate from now until, you know, if you've got a crystal ball, I'd like to know. But we're developing new procedures on how we're going to operate. They're doing the same thing.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I would just like to say too that I am encouraged about this project with regard to the needs in the Northview area for some commercial activity.
Agreed.
I mean, you know, it's grown gradually as a residential and then all of a sudden we look around and say, oh, there's no commercial. So this, I mean, and this is a huge housing addition there.
Look at it all.
It only makes sense.
That's a huge area.
Exactly. Makes really good sense.
And survey after survey?
Yeah.
We've engaged with the Northview Action Group.
Absolutely.
Survey after survey, discussion with them. The first thing on their list is we have to drive three miles to go to Walmart.
That's right.
Because that's the closest place we have. This is eight acres of commercial property.
Yeah.
You can imagine how hard that is to find in the city of Manhattan.
And it's going to grow north further, so, north of Marlat too. It already is, so, yeah, it's encouraging.
Any other questions I can ask, answer, commission?
Any question? I just want to say, I think it's a great plan. You know, we'd looked at this a while back when we were planning for the Community Rec Center.
Yes.
And the road itself was essential for the relocation of that. So that's a plus and it also adds immensely to school bus safety. You know, when school's back in session and then when you add the possibility of this eight acres of being developed, I don't think you can get a much better plan.
Generating revenue, yeah.
I think it's excellent.
This will probably end up being a net generator of revenue.
Sounds good. But that, is there a motion?
Yes. Mayor, I move that the, that we authorize the city staff to proceed with the solicitation of bids for the construction of the Kirkwood Drive Extension Project. Do I have to say all that? No.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yep.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We did move general, I'm sorry, consent agenda item G, H, H, sorry, to the end, the joint maintenance facility, 1, 2, and 3. Did you want Rob to speak to it? Who's going to be speaking to it?
Well, I moved it, that moved it to the general agenda and not because I have real questions about the project, the details of the project. I wanted for, my thinking is that the commission needs to talk about priorities. And we have, we're moving these through one at a time, a little bit at a time, in pieces. We're looking at a revenue shortage, I would say, for 2020, this year, and we're going to come down to some serious issues. It's not just a matter of setting the budget for 2025. We're going to have a hard time funding 2020 if we have three months or four months of this coronavirus business. So I just want to be sure that we are evaluating, we know what we're doing, we have a plan that, not just for one thing, not just how to fund one. This is one of the six projects that was not funded by the sales tax. But yet we're moving it through like we have the money and short of the general fund, well, in this case, we're funding this with all of the enterprise funds, save for 1 million, I think was the story with regard to the sales tax. I don't know if, I just want the commission to consider, and we may not, we may not want to do anything, we may want this to go forward, but we're going to be talking pretty soon about some other issues that, taken together, will put us over, significantly over, the budget for this year. So that's all, I just want to raise that as an issue. And it's not that I want to derail this one, but at some point, there's got to be a stop or a slowdown or a reconsideration because we have something that is truly unforeseen and it's a huge thing. It is not minor. It's just not, it's not something we can just hop on over and keep running.
I understand.
So whoever of you that would be interested in speaking, or even thinking about it, you know, whatever you want to do.
I, I agree with you, Linda. I think it's worth taking a look at because we don't, this, what's happening right now was, we didn't know it was going to happen. We don't know what the revenue sources are going to be, but it's worth having another discussion as we have projects that are in the millions of dollars.
And it's only March.
Go ahead.
I won't speak for Rob or the commission prior to me, but I was on this selection team with this and got to kind of look at the different proposals, the different ideas. And I think even, I'd like to bring into the forefront of your minds that the things that we've talked about recently, even around energy savings and the efficiencies, all of those things are factored into my thinking of this going forward. Because if we, if this doesn't go forward, we're, we're in a sorry place in, when it comes to maintaining and facilitating all the growth that is happening. So I, I don't have a problem with this going forward. I think that it should go forward. The site selection has been vetted out, the company's been vetted out, and Rob can speak to more specifics. But this is, this has always been a higher priority for me than most of the other projects. That's not, that's not, that's rarely been popular. I attribute that to my time in the motor pool, in the Army, and understanding that a well-maintained vehicle saves lives, it saves time, it's important. You don't want things to be broken in the middle of a crisis. This facility gives us a opportunity to be a top-notch maintenance and, and save in the long run.
Yes, sir, I agree with, with that fully. I had this as probably one of the top projects on that list we had. I had it above the Douglas Center, which we spent a lot of money on. And the, you know, you have to maintain those, those vehicles. If you've gone down to, you know, Juliet, where we've got the shops now, and you look at them, I mean, those buildings were built in the 1920s. You know, they were designed for, for what? To put a Model 8 truck in there? You can't get a fire truck in there. It's just deplorable. I walked around there a few months ago and took some pictures. And that convinced me, you know, we've got to fix this because long-term, you know, you've, you've got to have the right facilities to maintain it. And we're only investing here, you know, the first part in drawing this out. I think that, you know, that shop can be built incrementally. We've got a couple of properties that are going to end up being sold as a consequence of that, on Juliet, the old fire station on Anderson eventually. And I think the metal building there will be moved. And so I think, you know, the return on investment is just a must here on this. And I also agree that we're going to have to tighten our belt. I said that earlier during commission comments. But that may affect some other projects that are really not as high on my priority list as this one is. We've got to take care of that vehicle fleet. We've got thousands and thousands of dollars invested in it.
I might just speak to what the item is for the, for the public. This is the joint maintenance facility proposal. And we're really, we're at the design stage. And also the specific action is to approve the design agreement as well as accept the recommendation of the selection committee to enter into an agreement with McCowen-Gordon Construction to be the construction manager at risk. You might remember that the discussion was to move forward with the contractor, to have a partnership with the design team so that you can identify construction methodology, economies of scale, all of those things versus the traditional design bid-build. And so I think from that, it's a better product. The process that's engaged in this design process is two or three different steps that will come back to you for approvals to keep moving forward. So you're not obligating a full project at this point. That's, that's going to be absolutely constructed. But you're moving on to the next phase, which is design, which will take several months to move through that process. So-
I understand.
And we can stop those at any point?
I, I've been supportive of purchasing the land. I think that was important to secure and lock down. I would even suggest that we, and I, I was going to suggest that it's something we could do in phases. But it sounds like you've already got some, this broken down into phases, is that right?
So the phases I was speaking to were the process of phases.
Ah, not the-
That design process may yield construction phases. We haven't even got to that point yet because we haven't looked at the design components.
Hmm, I don't know. This is over a million dollars, and that's why I was just saying this is a big bite to chew. And if we, you know, we can move right on down the road. But there's going to be a payday with some of this that we're going to have to figure out.
Again, the million dollars is a total contract not to exceed, and we authorize hourly expenses along the way. That you can stop at any time.
And it's not just this project that I'm raising the flag on. I mean, I just want us to, wanted that kind of a consideration this evening as we move forward. So I am, I am, I will support the, the, the project. I just wanted to hit the pause button and say, are we sure here as we go down this road that we've given this a lot of thought? So with that-
I was just going to say real quick, the, I totally agree, and I think that's smart of us to pause and look at expenses as we go forward, especially on those projects that were outlined in, in large chunks. But there's also been changes amongst those with the levy being delayed, with the airport being delayed. We can't think of it as we did almost a year ago, as a six, six-project proposal with a large dollar. These are bites that we're taking out, I think. And this is, for me, a very important bite to make if we're going to go down the path of anything else. So it, I, I understand what you're saying about us looking, but also things have changed too. We don't want to get caught thinking that we did have six on the table for this year.
Okay, I'd like to, go ahead.
Please make a motion. I'm ready, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, so, the original gripe that I heard from a few voters during the campaign was, well, why didn't I stick it out at the county shops? It'd be closer to Manhattan from the county shops than driving all the way from the east side of town at 30 mile an hour through town. It would be just as close to try to put it out, out at the county shops. And so since that horse is already out of the barn, since we bought the land, the next question kind of ends up being, um, it was, it was a good question, too. So I guess the main, the main thing is, is my, my, there was also some concern that, I think, I'm not sure if the standard architect rate is generally 6% or 7.5% of the total project. And I, I think the million and change is a little higher than that. I remembered what it was. Okay, I spelled long enough. I'm really hoping that once we sell, that once that property gets available to sell, that will can stimulate some other commercial development. Obviously, the logical buyer for the one would be the recycling place because that's, they always could use more space, and that would be a logical expansion there, which isn't going to really generate a lot more property tax than generate any sales tax. But I would like, and some of those other ones with some higher visibility, a little farther east maybe, it would be nice if, you know, get those back on the tax rolls, maybe generating something. And I, and that would be the only main reason to think that this would be any kind of a economic development type of a factor. And I don't think we're using any EcoDevo funds with this in particular. So just watch your, sewer rates are going up, water rates are going up, everything else to help pay for it. But I, I'm a little excited about getting that property back onto the tax rolls with something more interesting than those 1920s buildings that, and our igloo of salt and sand pile down there.
And to that point, in the memo, I did do some, we did do some revisions here to explain because that, part of the criticism where there wasn't enough general fund money in the place. Well, the general fund purchased and constructed all the facilities that are on both the Juliet side as well as the old fire station on West Anderson. So the, the sale of those properties is a general fund credit. And we're not calculating even a future property tax raising on that property once it is back on the tax, tax rolls and how it might be redeveloped. So that could be in consideration as well.
I do have a, just a consideration, and that's the, out on West Anderson. We have put a lot of money into improvements there since it was a fire station and once we took it over. So I'd want to make sure that we, certainly that we recover all of the cost, at least the costs that we've put into that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the sheds that were built there were designed to be moved. So, so I think, you know, when they're coming into the construction phases, we'll be able to recoup that, at least. The concrete that was put in there, probably not. But, but I think, I think that's a good point. But at this point, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the original consent agenda, item H, the joint maintenance facility, SP 1601.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll. Fisher Hassel?
Yes.
Fisher Estabrock?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes, but I do want to make a comment. Though I approve this, I'm, I mean, we're having a lot of budget discussions right now, but since this is one of the few times we're going to see each other in this setting, I did want to talk to staff, and I did request Ron, as well as our finance hopefully too. But what's happening with the coronavirus and the economic impact it's going to have, we need to look closer at what's going to happen to the enterprise fund, the transient guest tax, the special alcohol tax, the sales tax, as those revenues come in. Because we do have all of these projects, and COLA, and payments, and RCPD. So all of those priorities are going to change and, and shift because we are going to have less revenue. And that's not just from the city, from the state and the federal. Unless there's some type of a provision in, in the federal budget as well as the state budget to help kind of alleviate some of that stress. But we don't know what's going to come this way, and certainly it will not take care of everything. So I think that needs to be said. With this item, we're going to be good with. But we need to be very cautious as we move forward on, on the rest of the budget discussions. Anything that, that's over a million, two million, five million dollars. So with that said, yes.
Fisher Butler?
Yes.
Fisher Morse?
Yes, and thank you for the discussion this evening.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. And city staff is also going to communicate with everybody how the next few meetings are going to take place. Thank you.